I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us remain standing and think about how servicemen and women serve our country here and overseas. Thank you. And welcome to the Village Board's trustee workshop meeting. Today is October 25th. It is now 7:00 p.m. Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Solomon.
Present.
Okay, we're all present and accounted for. Establishing the upcoming meetings, the next regularly scheduled meeting will be November 8th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. And the workshop meeting will be November 29th at 7:00 p.m. Yes, plug it in, please. All right, we're ready to go. Okay, first item on your agenda is the presentation in regards to special permitted, special permit use for the informal request of Savannah Akola on Washington Avenue. Give a brief explanation or narrative of what you're seeking for the board.
Special permit.
Okay.
I'm asking for a special permit. Reason being, when I first bought this house 10 years ago.
Can I, uh, can you just wait till the battery stops? Sorry, I couldn't hear.
That's okay. I think it stopped, right? Okay, so basically, when I purchased my house, it was about 30 years, approximately, 94. I bought it because of the feature that it had an office. I knew someday I would need it, not for myself maybe, but for my son. So all these years that I've owned the house, I was always told by my attorney that I was grandfathered in because it was always Dr. Own.
The attorney of record is Judge Terrence Wyon, as everybody knows.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, my son finally graduated 10 years ago from college. He's been using the office. And I had a conversation with the building inspector one day, and he said, oh, you're not grandfathered in. I said, what do you mean, I'm not grandfathered in? He said, you know, my understanding is, how can you take the grandfathership away? He said, well, you didn't utilize it. I said, well, I didn't have a need then. And no one informed me, I didn't know. All these years, I thought I still had the office even though it wasn't in use. So this is how we wind it up here for the special permit. Otherwise, I wouldn't have known.
So what is the actual use that you, grandson as you, your brother?
It's all my son.
Your son?
Uh, he's doing digitally.
Uh, he's been working.
So he just, uh...
He doesn't own the house.
That's it?
Yeah, it's all telephone calls.
Right, all telephone calls, he uses his laptop in the room room.
On Zoom. Very seldom do I see anybody over there.
No one comes to the house?
No.
You don't live there?
I've never seen, I'm sorry.
You don't live there?
Oh, yeah, I do live there.
So what do you mean, you don't see some, do people come?
I mean, he doesn't have any, but everything's on Zoom, computer.
So there's no clients that come to the house?
No, no. You know, everything's on computer now.
So you're just utilizing a room in your house, that he's utilizing a room in the house?
Well, he moved downstairs in your office, and one of the rooms he's utilizing is an office.
Very simple.
Yeah. Parking I have, even if it does turn out that he should have somebody come up.
Right.
I have nine spots comfortably, three outside.
So in this, in this environment with COVID and everybody working from home, this is a usual thing that he's doing and everybody else is doing, and he's working from home.
There are no problems with the neighbors environmentally impacted, it's, you know...
And you have ample parking anyway, the other way I know that, that's on your... No. That's old. That's old information. The old information then in regards to the zoning, how is everyone back and...
Yeah, we were told that in terms of the new code that came into effect, you would have to come here and ask for your permission. Otherwise, it would be just same again.
Right, so I'm not too familiar with property, but I assume it's set up as a separate office.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So, yeah, when, when, whoever owned it before, I think it was chiropractor, you said?
Chiropractor, chiroprast, that was Dr. Mannig, clinical doctor.
Right, so I know in the early 90s, probably before he sold, I think he tried to make it legal, but it was denied. He went for a variance and it was denied. That was the reason for the mix-up last time.
You know, I was...
I thought it was granted.
But yet, for about nine years, they functioned as chiropractors. It was open.
No, no, I, I, I'm saying, I think, based on the timing, I'm surmising that he was doing it for the purpose of selling, but I don't know. In any event, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah.
If you haven't been using it, you need a special permit. I'm not looking to make you do crazy stuff. I don't know if the boards take it, but this is kind of the informal part. In order to really do it, you do have to go to the planning board, there has to be a public hearing. So if the board's amenable, I don't know if you have any questions about the use or anything?
But is it necessary for them to utilize the room in the house as an office? Is it necessary for a special permit?
Look, we all, you know, did Zoom meetings from home and, you know, our bedrooms and stuff, so the answer on that would be no, but if they want to make it legal such that they have a special permit so that if they want to sell it, you know, that at least it's, because that has changed since the early 90s when they bought it, it is permitted by a special permit there.
Is that going to be a special permit by use variance or just special permit?
No, that's this board issuing a special permit. So my suggestion would be, you've heard it, if you have any questions, ask them now. If you want to send, we'll send it to the planning board, just have them review it. You know, it calls for a site plan, the board can waive that. If you maybe have something, even if you come in with a picture, come in with something.
Oh, I think, you mean, they have the office itself?
They have them all.
We have all that information.
Okay, they provide it as...
There's no additions, there's no renovations?
That's fine, but if you could just show that to the planning board so they have it, it's part of the record.
Yeah, you have pictures, you have packets.
This board can set a public hearing.
You've got a packet, didn't you?
Yes, yes, everyone has a packet.
According to the building inspector, when I had many conversations with him, and we went through the codes.
Right.
For the exception of that letter, I never, I never saw that one where it was denied.
With the denial, yeah.
But that's all new. Anyway, according to the new code, that there was no difference between home office and professional, it would be, now it's all under one category, up for interpretation.
Yeah.
We're only doing up to office. And, and, and there's no, you know, the sign, you have the sign, the issue?
I guess no sign, or you can't have a sign, or you can, I don't know.
Well, so, what I would suggest is, this board can set a public hearing, probably for December, they, I don't, you know, the reorg might not be the right place, but the board can set a public hearing, it can refer this to the planning board for, there's a meeting in November. So you go to the planning board in November, this, there'd be a public hearing on this, we can set it tonight, it's one for December, what is it, 5th?
6th.
6th, whatever, 6th. You know, because it's reorg, maybe it's 7:30 or something. And, you know, this way I'll get the process going. You have to go through the process.
Do we need to submit for the documentation?
Well, I'll speak to the building inspector and see, I don't, I didn't see the pictures. I don't know if I just didn't get them.
No, we had the last couple of meetings.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll speak to Steve Connolly, but...
Because the conversation I had with the building inspector, we went through the entire code.
Right.
That, you know, refers to this, this issue. We comply with all the things that the village, the parking, the space, entrance, exits, whatever. So, otherwise, people...
He'll give all that, whatever. I'm sorry, I'll pitch out. What I would suggest is take, do a resolution tonight, accepting the application, referring it to the planning boards and county planning, and have a public hearing on whatever date the board wishes.
He can still work now, we're not, we're not stopping him, correct?
No, no, no. I think that's more a situation than wishing to make it.
Form. These aren't formalized, the application.
These have some meetings.
Probably only come into play if they were in solving.
I think so, right, I think that's the...
The special permit wouldn't, I'm sorry, the special permit wouldn't go along with this ad.
It would not.
We want to do it one way, and we want to do it the other.
So just so you know, that with the special permit, it does not attach if you sell the home, it stays with...
Oh, no, no, it's an express, it's not going to be solved, but whoever buys it will have to do the same thing I'm doing.
Exactly.
Then that grandfathered in.
Right.
Well, this one is a little different, we'll, we'll go through it as it, when it comes up for the public hearing.
All right, so you want to do it by night, or the, or do it at the reorg, or you want to do it the week, there's a workshop the week before.
Maybe I'd want to buy it.
Yeah, but I don't think we should do it after here, we got enough done. Yeah, maybe the week before, you want to try it by Friday night?
Sure.
Right? Mr. Planning Board Chairman, we could do it by...
Rob, you can send them this month, it's not a big issue.
Yeah, okay, so let's say November 29th.
Remaining Thursday night.
Yeah, all right, well, let's, so let's set the public hearing for November 29th.
Wednesday night, I'm sorry.
All right, so I have a motion set to public hearing, November 29th at 7:05 p.m. to...
For special permits.
Special permitted use, application at 108 Washington Avenue.
That refers to planning board and appropriate age already.
Trustee Solomon makes such a motion.
Trustee Solomon. Second. Second, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
The intention to be read, he also, I'll talk to Lisa Ann, I'll be exact.
No, but I would like, so they're going to go before the planning board?
Well, yeah, I would suggest, Jim, I would suggest, that might get Joanne upset maybe, if you just come on this...
I'll talk, I mean, this way you can do whatever you want to do in November.
When's the meeting, Jim? When's your meeting?
The 17th of this month.
17th of November?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant Wednesday.
Well, we can even do it Wednesday.
No, I would do 17th.
17th.
All right, well, when are they going to bring it up at their meeting?
The 29th.
The 29th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think this Wednesday, I think that's too soon.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you can, I'm sorry, the public hearing here is November 29th. Before that, you're going to go to the planning board, November 17th. I would suggest maybe Wednesday or Thursday, call Joanne in the clerk's office. CIOFF, I mean. And I'll speak to her, or Jim will speak to her before then, so that we know what's happening, okay? And just to...
Do we need an attorney?
That's up to you if you wish to get an attorney.
I mean, it's, it's not involved.
You have detailed, you have detailed information with your packet, that's what you're going to bring to the planning board?
Yeah.
They're going to take a look at it, building took a look at it, planning will take a look at it, the public hearing will be set, we'll review it and refer it. All right?
Now, each one, each one view, all ready as a...
Everybody on, are you on?
Yes. I have enough to one.
You did a great job on the packet.
And she, Joanne may ask for a packet also.
I have, I have.
Okay, you're covered.
Well, it was brief and to the point.
Right, yeah.
Enjoy this time.
Get home before 9 o'clock, it's because there's a...
All right, thank you.
I need your niece, too. Good evening.
Aye, aye.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, Jim. Jeremy, Chief Koffa.
Good evening, I do have two items that are not on the agenda that will possibly need to be added to the board meeting agenda. November 27th is the Wallington Christmas Parade, would like to send two trucks there. It's in the evening, it starts at 6:00 p.m. The Wallington Christmas Parade, which is sort of like the holiday parade we do here, that's the original.
So you want the authorization now, right? So they have a motion for Suffolk Fire Department to send two trucks to the Wallington Christmas Parade.
Aye, motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second? Trustee Barone. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And then the next one is the Orangeburg Holiday Parade, December 11th, in the evening.
And just so we have the understanding, we're going to have coverage?
Yep.
For that evening, for both evenings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I have a motion for the Orangeburg Christmas Parade on December 11th? Two vehicles, two trucks?
Yes.
Two trucks also. Second, Trustee Corrigan. Second?
Barone.
Barone. All in favor?
Aye. That's all.
That's it?
That's it, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Chief Blanca.
Good evening, everyone. So far, by October, we've responded to approximately 700 calls for service. I have a few items that are going to require a resolution from the board. The first is to authorize the mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement between the villages Suffolk and Rockland County to accept $6,328 from a discovery reform grant award. I got over that with the board at a previous meeting, if you guys don't remember, I can go into detail about it, but this is just authorizing the...
So I have the resolution authorizing the villages Suffolk to participate in an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Rockland, accepting a criminal justice discovery grant award. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Solomon.
Trustee Solomon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, the next resolution would be to authorize, the Salvation Army has donated $500 to us that they've asked that we use for our K-9 program, so I would just be asking for its permission to accept that donation.
Have the, have the resolution authorizing Village of Suffolk Police Department permission to accept the $500 donation from the Salvation Army for the K-9 program. Do I have a motion to that?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Second. Trustee.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next resolution would be appointing provisional Sergeant William Seymour to the position of permanent sergeant from the promotional, effective 10/25/21, from the promotional list number 21034.
Have the resolution appointing William Seymour to the permanent sergeant, to permanent sergeant, effective October 26, 2021.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Second.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, next resolution would be to appoint Sergeant, provisional Sergeant David Figaro to the position of permanent sergeant, effective 10/26/21, from the same promotional list.
So I have the resolution appointing David Figaro to permanent sergeant, effective October 26, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Solomon.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, the last resolution I have is to accept the resignation of part-time dispatcher Peter Barber, who has accepted full-time employment as a dispatcher with the Towne Brown Police Department.
Now the resolution, accepting the resignation of part-time dispatcher, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Kathy Mills, rest of Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. I just have an update, I do it on Monday, if that works.
Yep, sounds good.
Boy, Kathy was actually...
Look out on the stonka tree.
Thank you.
Guys, you did a great job.
It was great.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rela.
Yes, good evening, board.
Good evening.
I have a few things I just want to make you aware of. I put in for the final reimbursement for the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project, $284,000 in grants, the final reimbursement was for $123,000. Put it in just like you did everything else, the county now has a new procedure, so now I had to take photos over there today and want all this sense of that, so it's a new level of paperwork, so that will be going in next week.
Okay.
Okay, and I should be getting the check rather quickly. The garbage truck, which we received an award of $250,000, the initial paperwork went into Dazne, and now just waiting for them to approve that, and they're going to send me more paperwork to fill out, okay? So it's a process that takes, you know, several months, we've been through this scenario before, but we should be getting the truck next year, okay? Been working with Jeremy, who was very fortunate to receive a grant for $50,000 for a new ATV and a trailer, so I put together the paperwork for that to go up to Dazne, the initial paperwork, and now we're just waiting for the approval of that, and then they, too, are going to be sending us more paperwork to fill out.
They're sending it to you.
Right, yeah, one of us. The thing is, it's all good news, I mean, really, I mean, we're going to be getting the money, it's just a process that we have to go through. Been working with Mike Gignio, Charles Sawicki, myself, and also Danielle in Charles' office, we're going to be putting in for what's called Weagre Act, Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grants, and we're going to be putting in for 1.5 million for the new water metering project. We're going to need a new generator in the well fields, that's going to be about 650,000, and then the PFAS water removal project, which is about 550,000, so that totals to about 2.7. So when all is said and done and all the paperwork is finalized, it might be a little bit more, might be a little bit less, we'll see a couple resolutions tonight that Mike's going to speak to, which are required for this grant application. The application is due November 22nd, so I'll be able to have a good Thanksgiving because it will be in...
All right, no paperwork to do.
No paperwork, yes. Finally, the West Maple Avenue Sidewalk Project, that's a community development block grant, that's, we put in for $318,000 in grant money, the project's $350,000, okay? The reason is, it's a little less than the amount of the actual project is, they want to see the village make a contribution, okay? So we do approximately 10%, so we put in for 318. The county said that they're going to let us know, they said last week, like within a week or two. I thought they were going to do it before the election.
May.
Yeah, so I alerted Lisa to that because you'll be notified, they haven't sent it directly to me, but sent it to me or to you, but hopefully we're getting some very good news about that grant, $300-plus thousand. That's it.
Very good, thank you. I'm just going to jump over to Ari Ben-Moshe and the LaFia Theater Noise Permanent Application, so we won't keep you here. Okay? Okay? It's just the one letter?
Yeah. Okay, so Mr. Ben Moshe has submitted an application for the permit. We discussed this with respect to the noise ordinance, the board passed that ordinance that allows you to grant a permit. The issue has always been what the conditions would be, and the time and things of that nature. I know that the board had some ideas, why don't we hear it from Mr. Ben Moshe, and then the board can discuss how it wants to handle it. So, you want to go ahead?
Sure, sure. I'll save any remarks as it relates to what our plans are with the theater, I think everyone here, the trustees, know from our previous workshop meetings what we plan to do with renovating the theater. We put some thought, you know, along with some feedback, how this application, this permit application should look, as well as giving the village through its board of trustees an opportunity to revoke that permit, to the extent we're really bad and making a lot of noise after 1:00 a.m. So essentially, what I delivered in this short letter is a 1:00 a.m. exception, we'd like the permit to be in perpetuity, unless otherwise we're vote by the board, and that's where I'm here to speak with you. What we provided for, if we're in violation of it, is if it's noisy after 1:00 a.m., we, we set 10 times where, where if we're in violation after 10 times, we can be put on probation, if we're, if we again violate that 1:00 a.m. exception another 10 times, we're asked to be called back for a hearing where you can fine us, revoke our permit, temporarily revoke the permit, whatever the board sees fit. So I leave it to the board to talk it through at that point.
Sounds like criminal justice reform.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just point out, you know, he's asking for, based upon our conversation before, he's asking for 1:00 a.m. any day of the week, I know we had discussed Thursday or Monday...
Friday, Saturday.
Right, right. Thursday to, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, being treated differently than Monday, Wednesday, or Sunday to Wednesday, you know, but this is why we're here, for the discussion, and then based on the discussion, I would put some, have something ready to go for November 9th meeting, but you got to let me know what you want. The one thing I will say again, is ask for 10, you know, I would call them incidents, violations, what you want to call them, and then probation, and then 10 before there's a fine, I mean, you could set 10 per year, if it's 10 or whatever, there could be a small fine, and then a second 10, possibility of revocation, I mean, you know, 10's a lot.
I think 10 and then 10 more during probation is, is like too many, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe 10 is the number, I don't know, it's up for discussion, but not 20.
Right, right, he's asking for 10 in a year, so if he has 9 in a year, he gets, he gets a whole new 10 for year two.
Okay.
So he's got 9 in year two, you know what I mean, he could have 9 every year before he could even do anything. So that's his proposal.
What are the other businesses in town, if you were a restaurant, and you had a live band playing, when do they have to stop?
Uh, chief, you have it for live entertainment?
I have, but I, live music, there's a, it's a separate permit.
Right, you get, they get a permit from the, I guess the...
It's in here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Right, it's a planning board application.
So when Ole Ole had live music, they needed a permit every time?
No, it was to be able to do live entertainment at that location.
So when Ole Ole would have live music on a Friday night, they had to get a permit every time they...
No, no.
Not every time.
They had, they had the permit to have live entertainment.
Okay, that would last...
Right.
A year or so.
Right.
And then when would they have to be done? What are you, what? 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
All right, so 1:00 a.m. is a uniform...
Well, but there's a different, I'm just looking, I don't see it on there as being 1:00 a.m.
I think that he asked for certain times.
So if you go behind that, there's actually another application for this...
Well, yeah, there is.
In the application, it asks you to provide it?
Right, I don't, it's not set in the, in the code as 1:00 a.m. I think that it's generally been granted as 1:00. Chief, is that...
Yeah, but it's consistent, 1:00 o'clock.
Right. Right, but I guess what we could do is, is see what other, what they got, the conditions that they got, but...
Well, this is definitely a special use permit, it's a little bit different than what, what a bar owner would be having on a live permit.
What we're asking for is quite different than what any other bar or restaurant is asking. They're asking for a special permit to have live music. We already can do that, as of right.
Right.
The difference with Ole Ole, or another example, is if they had a band there, and someone nearby said, it's too noisy, they would still be in violation of Code 175, regardless of whether they had a special permit to do live music or not. So I think that's a distinction, and what I'm asking for is the board to sign on with me that if it's believed to be too noisy before 1:00 a.m., that I will not be in violation of Chapter 175. And to answer the question about the, wasn't a question, but the comments about 10, or 20, or whatever the violations are, I know as the future business owner, that we're not going to be playing music after 1:00 a.m.
Right.
That I know, we're not going to be, so we, so, so as, as a, as the defining point of what is a violation, how many kinds of... is a violation, how many times before I can come back for a hearing, I'm open to those numbers, I'm open to change that. As what we talked about in the last workshop meeting is, will it be noisy?
Right, and the issue is, that raises a good point, you explained it very well. What if at 10 o'clock it's too noisy? You're saying it's okay, let's say you say 1 or 12 or whatever the time is, you can do nothing about that if it's too noisy at 10, unlike Ole Ole or this other one. So that's, that's where, you know, especially at the beginning, you might want to have a little, keep it a little tighter, and then after a year or two, you know.
So on the, on the subject of noise, I don't know if anyone noticed as they walked in the building, anything different?
I do.
I heard that.
So I, I am blasting music in the theater right now, blasting it. I don't hear it right here.
Don't crack that beautiful ceiling with that.
You were blasting, it was very loud.
Well, you are right, but, so I have speakers positioned in front of the stage, right by where our two double doors are. So if you were right by one of those double doors, you're as closest as you'll be outside to a speaker. And through, through the assistance of Dynamic Productions and Brian Rosenblum, earlier today, they brought in tons of professional sound equipment, and they're essentially booming the room right now, so.
Well, that's one of the things they asked for, I think, was to see what it would sound like.
So I wanted to give that, and we've walked around to the property line, so as, as you leave today, I encourage you to walk outside and, or we could adjourn right now and go take a look and talk about it. I know that's international, but we could walk right to that window, the closest window, and see if we really hear anything, because in my opinion, Village Hall, through these windows, the Village Hall, are as close as you're going to be to where the music is. And that would give a good barometer of if this is really an issue. I wanted to give the board an extra layer of comfort with the decision that they're making or would make in early November.
And I also think the fact that we've been, you've been in the village forever, the village has been here forever, and I'm sure if there's some concern, it's, we're not going to, I would hope that whatever board, whatever year, wouldn't wait till number 10 to say, "You know, we're having these issues," and not work on it as a team before it becomes the 10th issue. That's what I would like to think would happen on any board that presides here.
I'm open to five, you're on probation, and you call me, and another five, you know, the board would have a right to, in the same calendar year.
I'm okay with that. You know, I've been in your theater to watch like Star Wars. It was so loud, I had to cover my ears. And, you know, I live like 100 feet that way, on a night when I was not at the theater and I knew that it was so loud in there, it was blowing my ears out. I really couldn't hear any of that.
Yeah. We're really talking about disturbing the peace and quiet enjoyment of someone's home and the time when people should be sleeping, getting ready for the next day. That's really what we're talking about. Everything that, and there were some distinctions in my letter that I was concerned about, things that are in my control, I am willing to put up for what could be construed as a violation of the permit that we're discussing, but things that are outside of my control, I don't want that to fall into a violation of my permit. So for example, more cars in downtown because they came to see a show and are now leaving, or people that are not my staff, that are making noise outside someone's window or what have you, that would not be a violation. My concern with, with the code originally, and why I was, why I brought this up to begin with, is the code is subjective in its nature, so, which is why I wanted to, I wanted the board to be able to hear what the violation actually was. Perhaps the police force would be called and notified, I believe they administer the code as it relates to noise, it's just a guess, I'm not sure. Then, then we could hear what the violation was, we could hear what the complaint was, and it gives me an opportunity to come in for a hearing to, to give my side of the story.
That's a good idea. Do you think the board would like to adjourn and walk outside to hear it?
Sure.
Okay, motion.
You want to do, do the rest of the meeting?
Do the rest of what?
The meeting, or we got the rain.
The rain's coming, but since we have him here, and if there's any questions at the board, we can do it.
This is important to me. I'll wait till the end of the meeting.
No, let's do it now. Let's do it now. Right by the 1 a.m. clock.
We did top 40 pops to make sure we drilled boom, boom loud.
What is it, because if I don't like the song, I don't want to know.
Motion for adjourn.
Actually, it's not adjourned, continue the meeting outside.
I hope it's still on, I put it on repeat, but.
Just for the record, just for the record, board, Fred and Steve.
Can I only go two by two?
No, Fred and Steve, just observe, no comments till you come back or discussion.
We're like on the news arc, two by two.
Unless we be in violation of the open meeting.
Okay, very good. Motion to go into, back into the regular meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
赞成.
Okay, so that was a great presentation.
Yeah.
Does the board have any further questions in regards? I mean, I believe that what was presented to us here is acceptable. I think the excess, the 10 times is in excess of what we're looking for. I would say narrow it down to five times, and five times, I mean, we're here to work with you and to develop that relationship, which we always had, and we'll just continue and we'll work through any issues that arise. That's the way I look at it.
I just want to comment on that first, that the, again, the nature of a violation of this would, is also subjective. So having an opportunity for us to come in, identify the dates, the issues of when things went wrong, what sound was actually heard, what noise was actually made, and, and, you know, I'm relying on the, you know, the integrity, not only of the board, but of, but of the various officials that are, that are writing that incident down, because I have, you know, a lot of new investment that's going to be going into this venture. My original concern with this is that that could be taken away quite quickly, you know, for reasons other than noise.
Can you give an example of the five or the 10, like an example of what would, what in your mind would constitute a violation, just so we understand and we're all on the same page?
If after 1 a.m. the band played on.
Okay.
And it was louder than, than what you're hearing now, I would think, which is going to disturb a nearby resident who's in their house with the windows closed, and there's that vibration or sound is still coming through, you know, as whatever Chapter 175 is defining as noise. So the other issue that I think could potentially be a violation is, let's say, the, the band played, we shut down at 11:30, and then they want to take down, take down their speakers, et cetera, put them on the truck that night, and then take it off. So one of the definitions of a violation of this code is loading and unloading in the, you know, in, from 10 to, I believe it's 7 or 8 a.m. So if they were to load out that night from cost savings or what have you, I could see that that possibly could create noise, where I might have a violation, where I, where we did everything we were supposed to, but then we agreed to let them load out one night. Let's say we try it out, and if it's making too much noise, I want to be notified each time there's a violation, which I believe I would be, and then I know how to rewrite that script, and in my future writers, they'd say, "I'm sorry, you have to unload 8 a.m. the next day, or 9 a.m. the next day, because it's causing a disturbance."
I think that we would be able to accommodate that, and, and working closely with code enforcement or the police department, if there was a complaint registered with the police department or code enforcement.
Right, I think that's how it would have to be. I think for everybody's sake. And the one thing I mentioned, you know, the chief and I were discussing, you know, we've heard, as Steve knows, you know, complaints of, example, the firing range. The board allows us, which is fine, you know, again, we've all heard it, if there are complaints, you'd say, "Well, look, we gave them a permit up to 1 a.m." So that, that's the issue. You know, I will say anecdotally, it seemed the only place I heard it coming out of was the doors, because I walked around both sides.
Yeah.
And the doors, you know, so, you know, and we, I discussed, you know, that maybe, you know, when you're doing your renovations, if those were padded or something, or, you know, I, I don't know what you're doing with the doors, but that might.
The doors, as they are right now, have some, the way you, the way you have better sound attenuation with, with anything is you, you trap where air can get through. It's as simple as that. Vacuum is a good sound insulator. We, we lose so much energy, from an energy efficiency standpoint, we plan to reseal those doors, but in addition to that, as you, as you walk through, you notice that you went through a best review, some things that I could think about, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I could add another series of doors, exit doors, one inch, and now you have two doors where it was otherwise one. The other thing I'd like to point out is, as you walked into the theater, these were rolled in, put right next to the doors. Our P A system and, and sound system is going to be hung from the ceiling, and the speaker array is going to be pointed where it's going to be most optimal for the people sitting in the seats. So the, the, the speakers themselves are going to be more directed into the auditorium than they were here. These were sitting right next to the doors, which is why you heard it most at the doors. And secondly, because, you know, it's, there are holes throughout the doors, so sound is getting through.
Personally, I think it was nice and quiet outside, even by the doors, it was adequate. It was, you know, like there was noise, you could hear it, but it wasn't, it wasn't objectionable by my perspective of what would objectionable.
Right, it's not blaring, it's not like I'm doing an outdoor concert.
And I appreciate that you took the time to get the equipment to run the test, because I think at one of the workshops where this came up, I specifically requested, just get a band to play, or get some music to play, and be loud, and see what, see what you got. Because we, none of us have an idea of how much of an envelope the building was for sound, but it sounds like it's very good. So we're very happy about that.
And thank you for the suggestion.
I'll put something together, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I want to clear for everybody the definition of a violation. For example, let's say 11 people complained that at 1:15 a.m. there was, you know, too much noise. To me, that would be one violation. But is the definition of that 11?
At the time, for one incident?
Yeah, one incident.
Yeah, for one incident, yeah.
One violation.
Yeah. It would almost be treated, you know, presumably, at that hour of the night, the police would be called, and we could discuss with the chief, or we'd ask that a report be made, that, you know, Mr. Jones, Ms. Smith, whatever, they complained about the noise, officer so-and-so heard the noise, and it, you know, whatever.
So it's incidents, incidents, not the number of people complaining.
Oh, yeah, I think that's.
Also, you had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you had mentioned about loadouts at night. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if there's a particular code against that, but I think as long as, you know, people doing loading are respectful and not, "Hey, hey, hey, let's move this here," you know, yelling loud outside, I don't think loading a truck is, is going to pose a problem, in my opinion, but if they're very noisy crews, that's something altogether different.
I was thinking of an example where, where in my right sane mind, I would violate this permit that was going to put my entire business in jeopardy, and that's one example where I thought of it. We've done a number of film shoots in town, on the street and inside our building, and a lot of those happen after hours, and, you know, perhaps there's a, the trailer level, you know, slams and makes a loud bang. Is that a violation, is it not? It's going to ultimately be up to, I think, the interpretation of the board. If it was a violation or not, and that's my concern.
It's the same with a code, you know, whatever's in the code. If a one-time bang, I don't think the police would write somebody up for a violation of the noise ordinance ordinarily. So I think that's how it's ordinarily treated.
Yep.
The only thing, what I was going to say is, I'm going to put this together, Ari and I have been emailing, we can beat each other up over it in the next two weeks, if there's anything. The only other thing I'll ask, do you want to make it uniform 1 a.m.? Do you want to change it for weekends and weeknights? Other than that, I think I can put something together based upon what's going on.
I'm fine with 1 a.m., but.
Okay, it's up to you.
1 a.m., across the board.
Okay.
Consistent.
I mean, you want to keep it at the violation, so it seems, it says 10 times, you want to just go with six times, or like, you know.
We want to do the five, five.
Six and six, for two months, you know, one every two months, I mean, just.
I'll try to come up with something based on the numbers we're talking about, something you can look with, you know. Again, we may be in the position, you want it to work, but the board also has to be in the position that if they are getting complaints once a week, that they can't say, "Well, we gave them, you know, 10 times this year," you know what I mean?
No, but there's going to be conversations before we get past.
Right.
One or two or three, and hopefully, there's none.
And to put your mind at ease, the people who live here, who are going to be bothered by this, you know, they're used to the train coming by. So, you know, they know that where they live is in a downtown area, and there's stuff going on.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that this is something we can work with, and that, and if, if there ends up being an issue, or that, that my phone is, is always there to give me a call, and I'd like to, let's say, for example, it goes to 10 times, and I am coming here for a hearing, my hope is what I'm doing is going to revive, help revitalize downtown and bring a whole other level of culture and entertainment that, that the, that the village hasn't seen, and that if, if it gets to that point, which, which I'm going to have best efforts that it, that it won't, that, that the board will sit with me and try and work it out before revoking the permit, but I understand that I'm putting everything on the table to happen.
Sure. And I'm sure the board would definitely work with you and consider all the options available to us to remedy any issues that may arise, when most likely will not arise. I don't think we'll get to that level.
Your venue brings an added level of economics to the village that, you know, if there was a little noise at night, it would be worth it.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
I'm really looking forward to what you're planning.
Yeah, I'll put something together, and I'll certainly send to Ari and the board before the meeting, and then we'll vote on it at the, the next meeting.
Perfect.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the walk.
Get home safe.
You as well. Look at you, you're going to make it for the first one.
And I want to thank Mike.
Thank you very much.
Trustee General Manager, Mr. Eifel, for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice weekend, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys, good night.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Governor. Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you, thank you, Governor.
Next up, the pal in the public voice, Mr. Sawicki.
All right, good evening, board. This is a board update. T O's have been issued for two used trucks, one used Skidsteer, and one new pickup truck.
Yay.
Yay indeed.
Yeah.
Requesting authorization for application payment number two for Neil Electric Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1E, in the amount of $7,125.
So I have that resolution authorizing authorization for application for payment number two for Neil Electric and Communication Company for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1E, in the amount of $7,125. Motion.
Motion.
Go ahead, have a second.
Second.
All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Runaway improvement phase 11 and 2021 runaway improvement projects are substantially complete. Line striping and stopbar pain remain. These projects are based on unit costs and estimated quantities. I'd be requesting a modification to the contract in the amount of $50,000 utilizing contingency funds. Any questions on that?
Is this, this 50,000, it's because you expect it to overrun the original estimate, or?
Well, it, again, it's based on estimated quantities. The amount of asphalt was in excess of the estimated quantity that we got established.
Who made the original estimate?
You did, I see.
Oh, yeah, you did, I see.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have that ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The other item, one other item that's not on the agenda. The, we are currently interviewing outside candidates for the wastewater treatment maintenance helper. So we're requesting, we had some discussion earlier, the Mike, you've done some work on this, to modify the budget, the wastewater treatment plant operating budget, in order to accommodate a new hire. So again, it would be a new, it would be an outside candidate, not inside, so we'd be able to establish that. I think Mike has already established that agreement.
Would be started at level one, grade one, step one?
Step one, right, right.
No take is inside?
No. As required by the union, we did post the position, said that it's, and the board was interested.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Jamito, hello, Mr. Jamito.
Good evening, there, Board. Resolution 141 was adopted on July 12th of this year, and that appointed Maria Duffy as the Deputy Village Treasurer. There is also a requirement under the Public Officers' Law that the, or the Village Law, that the officers reside in the villages suffering unless you have the resolution allowing them to reside within the county. So Maria does reside within the county, and this amendment being proposed would allow her to serve as Deputy Treasurer.
So I have the resolution amending resolution 141 of 2021, approving the appointment of Maria Duffy to position as Deputy Village Treasurer for the Village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Trustee Sullivan moves.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next one is another amending resolution. Resolution 205 was adopted October 4th, 2021. That rescinded $399,752 of authorized but unissued bonds, and after a further review, we've determined that the actual amount should be $334,752. So this resolution is making that amended.
I have the resolution amending resolution 205 adopted, adopted October 4th, 2021, rescinding $399,752 of authorized unissued bonds to the amount of $334,752. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So is this just a, like, a miscalculation, or?
Actually, what happens when we're going to do our bond issue this, this month, it was determined that $65,000 was needed for one of the...
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next resolution, actually Fred mentioned earlier today, we are applying for grants, WEA grants, as well as looking to get E F C financing on the much-needed project for the wellfields emergency generator. Right now, if something goes out power-wise at the water plant, we don't have a backup emergency generator. So this is a bond resolution that would authorize up to $650,000 for that emergency generator. It requires roll call vote and affirmative votes from at least four members of the board trustees.
So just to go, this is three separate bonds?
No, there are two separate ones before you. One is $650,000. The other one is $550,000 for the PFAS removal system. That, as Charles has described before, is where we have some carbon filter units at the water treatment plant that could be modified to remove the PFAS, which is a toxic chemical that everyone's trying to get out of the water. But the bottom line is, that would be $550,000. That, too, Fred is applying for the WEA grants. We've already made application to the E F C for, to be on their intended use plan for this project as well.
So for these two bonds, $550,000 and $650,000, we may actually get some, some grant money?
We may get grant money, and we most likely would get some kind of financing through the E F C, beneficial financing. If we make a certain score, we may actually get a very low interest rate on that financing in a 0% short term. It's very possible to happen, especially with the PFAS, because PFAS is something that affects everybody, it's, it's removing a toxic chemical from the water system as well.
It's possible.
But they have to be taken separately, and again...
They do.
Yes, and...
Okay, so I have the resolution for bond resolution of the Village of Suffering, New York, adopted October 25th, 2021, authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $650,000 to finance the acquisition of a, of a wellfields emergency generator for the village water system, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $650,000, and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Mike, none of this has to do with the money that we got from New York Rising, correct?
Correct.
Those are for different generators.
Those, yeah, the generators from New York Rising, which is the Village Hall and the garage.
Street department.
Okay.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Verone?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soberman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes.
The next one is regarding the parking lot B repaving project.
Don't we have to do the other one?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you do both?
No, I only did one.
That's what I thought, yeah. You have to each one separate.
Hold on. So I have the next resolution authorizing new issuance of bonds in principal amount not to exceed $550,000 to finance the acquisition and installation of a PFAS removal system for the village water system, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $550,000, and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So just to clarify what I was asking before, on either or both of these, if we do get grant money, that would offset, we wouldn't need to finance it.
Correct, we would not need to finance the rest.
Okay.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Verone?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soberman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Passes.
The last item before you is a resolution regarding the parking lot B repaving budget. Essentially, that project was started back in 2020, and there was $100,000 of C D B G money coming from 2019, and another $70,250 coming from 2018 C D B G money. So essentially, what this resolution is doing is saying that the remaining balance of debt, $300,000, which was authorized for the project, is all part of that project, and so the total project estimated cost is $470,250. Once again, if we don't spend all of that money, then any money that wasn't spent would be used to pay down any of that debt.
So I have the resolution, project 2020 003, parking lot B repaving budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Justice Borden.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did the Lafayette Theater noise permit. Next is a special permit for live entertainment. You have the application via Tapas and Bar LLC, that's the...
The old Georgie.
The old Georgie.
The old chat room.
Right, so that's all there. The process would be similar to the other one. This should be sent to the planning board for their review and comment, and, you know, any conditions they recommend, and then this board, if they're okay with it, can grant that. I don't see anybody here for that. Is anybody here for that?
No, he didn't come.
So...
That's a good start.
Yeah.
I think the way Steve explained it to him is that this was like informal, that if we said it can go to planning, then then he'll go to planning.
What, are we, we able to amend it now?
No.
No? So their request is?
You'd need the, you know, the public hearing and everything else, so.
Mm-hmm.
It would be the similar, if you want to do it, you know, keep it on track with the other one, just to...
No, I'm saying amend what he writ, wrote in, in the application, in the permit, in the question.
Oh, what you're thinking.
Well, he's saying he wants a permit until 3 a.m.
Well, but when, granted, we can change it, but, you know, if you want to indicate what you're thinking.
Right.
1 a.m.?
Right. Right.
Well, part of the problem is he's not here, so I don't, I don't know exactly what he's looking for.
Yes.
I mean, generally speaking, it seems like a place that you would allow it, but it's about this...
Until 3 in the morning?
No, I'm saying about, it's a matter of the details.
I think, I think he needs to come before us and, and, right, and provide us the details on what he plans on doing, and the timeframe.
Yeah.
And, and this, I don't know, if that's something that's...
The, the planning board can wait. It's up to the planning board. Play, it's up to the planning board if they want to accept it. Oftentimes...
Does he, do you want a recommendation as a village board from the planning board?
Well, you have, they have. The question is this.
Before you, before you...
It goes to planning board, to planning board. You can set the public hearing, and theoretically, not granted, or granted under the conditions, whatever you establish. And he'll go, he has to go to the planning board.
He was in front of us, Rob, and I asked him for his hours of operation, and he did say 1 to 3, but I didn't know he was coming in for a music permit.
No, he came in for a sign.
He just came in for a sign, and I said, "I'd like to see your hours of operation on the door or the window." But like I said, I thought it was just going to be open, no music was involved, because he's got to come before you.
I, I just don't, when I'm reviewing the application, I don't like the reviewing of the application piece of it.
So tell them to come back?
That's what I would say, you know, and this, I think, should be more detailed than the space provided, and only three tables? You know, I don't know if that's the accurate dimensions and has been checked, I believe it was checked by the fire inspector, but at the same time, how many tables were in there before? I don't know.
You're going to have to send Steve with your own, and let him work around.
Well, that's what this is, that's what they provided.
Yeah.
I don't think there's enough detail on, with, with this.
Well, look, Steve and Joe were in there, and that's Steve and Joe?
That's Adam and Steve.
And that's the fire inspector.
This morning, he said that he was in the...
I'm just saying, I think it should be more detailed explanation.
Do you want him to come in the 27th, or the 9th?
Yeah, I think, how does the board feel? Did they review the application?
Then we could talk to him about it, to try and do...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can tell him, Lisa Ann, I don't know if you're speaking with him, or Steve, but say the board...
He will.
Yeah, the board reviewed, but they want you there.
Okay.
And maybe something a little more detailed.
Yeah, because I had asked myself with this, I'm like, he Thursday through Sunday till 3 a.m., and then Steve spoke to him, and he said, "No, it's, he just wants it to be the option, it's going to be intermittent, it's not going to be every single day, every single week, but he wants to have the option to do it on a Thursday through Sunday."
Okay. So we'll have him come back then.
Okay.
If he comes back tonight, is that enough time, depending on when we decide to get him to the planning board on the 17th?
It could be, it could be. But again, it could be entertained either December or January.
Aye.
And you have a workshop in, in December, you think.
Rob, you got to consider that these appointments above that, and next order that.
So that was that one?
That's actual, right?
You have that, you talked to him originally.
All right, I think he has to come back.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Lisa Ann also about the application. So that was that one. The last thing I had was about the issue we were discussing about the loading zone on Chestnut. So Charles, I'm not sure what you're saying here, 63, on the west side, 63 linear feet in length, starting 168 linear feet from the beginning of Chestnut at the south side of Lafayette. So 168 feet from Lafayette.
Lafayette.
Then 63 feet along the west side of Chestnut. Is that longer than what's there now?
No. It sounded like the board wanted to modify that, reduce it down to two spots.
Well, that's, I thought we passed, it was two spots.
Well, there's two spots now. The sign is there for two spots, I saw just now, right?
Oh, is that right? It was three about two weeks ago, but it would have been changed.
What's there now? Charles, two?
It's three spaces.
Three. That's what I saw two weeks ago.
Three yellow marks.
So it's three, so you want two?
I, I think...
No, no, I'm sorry, I told him two.
That was based on the board's request. Two is very tight, I don't think it's adequate, but that's what the board wants to do. At least that's my...
It's still a bit...
It might be a better check, check now.
Doesn't really believe you.
He's going to be limited on what he can fit in there, from type of truck he can fit.
How big is the tractor trailer, do we know? 80 feet?
65 feet.
65 feet.
How many feet is a typical parking spot?
42.
So you're back to three spots, is what you're saying?
Is this because they're marking it as a shelter?
Just to clarify, it's two spaces plus his driveway.
No, it's one.
The driveway in front of his business.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that makes up the 63 feet.
Okay, that's fine then. So if it's two spaces plus his driveway, I'm fine with that.
So that's what's existing, right?
No, right now, there's three spaces plus his driveway.
He still isn't going to have enough room, because we're going to now, after this, we're going to put the no standing, stopping, or standing to satisfy the complaints from the Sheldon and the inability for the sightline while exiting the Sheldon to make a left or a right onto Chestnut. So with that said, realistically, you're not allowed to park a truck in that portion of the road to load or unload, is that correct, Chief?
Correct. Well, right, but what about where the driveway is already?
That will only give you, so it's 63, 63 feet in parking spaces, is that inclusive of their driveway?
Yes.
It's inclusive of the driveway.
So it's two spaces plus the driveway, I'm fine with that.
But that doesn't alleviate the problem for the Sheldon, that's the problem.
Tractor trailer is a six feet, five?
65 feet.
So this is 6 feet 3.
No, six, well...
You've got to keep in mind that there's got to be a distance for a pork truck to unload a trailer and put the stuff somewhere.
No, we'll put a side door. It's a problem. It's a problem. It's a major problem in whichever way we look at it, but we need to satisfy the safety of the residents exiting and entering the Sheldon.
Is two feet of encroachment past the driveway going to be a problem?
Yes.
Two feet?
Yes.
This much?
Yes. But that's a truck, that's if you slide the truck in this way.
It's being dropped from the stairs, right?
Yeah, you know, it's not going to be able to drive in there.
You need, actually, a tractor trailer typically needs twice the distance. So you look at 130 feet, a tractor trailer, normally, we need to maneuver into, say, a loading dock.
Right. But we need to alleviate the trucks from, any truck standing and unloading in that zone in between Tiger Chef and the Sheldon.
Right. Does this Tiger Chef have a way of accommodating a trailer going perpendicular to the building in their garage?
No.
I mean, how deep is their garage space? Because maybe that could become...
What about on the east side?
Their garage is filled with racks and products and all sorts of fun things.
Could the loading zone be on the east side, chief?
So you probably have to do it in a parked area, which you have to cross the street, cross the streetless floor plus, which is really not...
I mean, I think there's a problem currently with it being in the street.
I mean, look, even with the three spots that are there, they're utilizing, it's a constant problem. So I think, you know, if you have to take a spot away, it's just going to cause a worse problem.
What's most important, chief, is sections in between, the no stopping, standing?
Yeah, I definitely think that needs to be changed to no stopping, standing, parking, because, you know, when we were out there and looked at it, if anything that's encroached in that area blocks the view of what would be westbound traffic on Chestnut Street, they can't, people leaving the Sheldon can't see at all until they're out into the roadway.
Well, what happens if we take one more spot behind it?
Behind...
So instead of going towards the Sheldon, if we take another spot behind, behind the Sheldon?
Yeah, you're not going towards the Sheldon, but they're talking about doing...
No, I know, but if we take another one down the road a bit?
What we currently have.
So there's more than three parking spots?
If you put the back of your trailer far away from this building, he's going to drive, drive his fork truck and damage our sidewalk more than he has.
He can't drive the fork truck on the sidewalk or the road.
Now, but when this first was open, you guys let him do it with your little bump stop to get on and off on the sidewalk until the bricks fell in. So either way, this guy's either got to pick his building up, move away. There's no way he's going to, FedEx trucks are too small, UPS trucks, I mean, are too big, and he can't get them inside his building. The door's not high enough.
Right.
We tried every avenue. We measured not only the sidewalk, we measured his front building.
Sure, it's sure.
I know, you know, there were complaints that I've received personally from the proprietor at 23A about...
Well, how did DPW supervise? I got a lot of complaints. I can't get a high-end truck to...
I'm just reporting, I'm just recording what I hear, trustee. I'm not trying to compare it to any other fault.
I'm just saying that we have restricted flow, as you saw, we were down there.
Yeah, we need to clarify that any hazards that exist. That's the most important thing right now.
Either one way.
That might be something.
Well, yeah, he proposed that no stopping, standing, area of 24 feet.
Right.
So you saw that, so.
231 linear feet from the beginning of Chestnut at the center. On the west side. So 231 feet in is no parking, no standing, no stopping for one spot's worth. That's kind of what's existing, isn't it?
Well, there's, well, when you say existing, there is some hatching, you know, zebra striking?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much that area.
Right, so that's kind of current condition.
We would need to put something in addition to that, some physical...
Right, but I'm saying, there's nobody parking there now, do you read it?
Well, the trucks are, right?
No, no, right.
That's the whole problem.
So that's that one. And then loading zone, what about timing? Well, is this something you want to do or do you want to?
What does the board feel?
Talking or?
I feel like we should find out exactly what, maybe limit the hours that they can have a full-size tractor trailer and then give them the three spots for maybe four hours or something like that. But the rest of the time, just have smaller trucks, and they can have two spots plus the driveway. That's my opinion, because I think...
Say it again?
So right now, they have carte blanche during the entire business day, the restaurant, Tiger Chef.
7:00 AM to, they have 7:00 to what, 4?
Something like that, whatever the hours are. Well, you told me, whatever.
No, I'm asking them, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so right now, it's sort of carte blanche, that a truck could come and go at any particular time. I think clearly we have an issue of space there. There's not enough space. So I don't think that they should get all of the space all of the time when there's other proprietors in the area that are essentially complaining that there's not enough parking spaces for their customers. So I think that the time should be split in half. Maybe they can get all three spots four hours a day or something.
So then...
I'm just proposing it.
No, 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 yeah, I hear you, but so if we say unloading, loading and unloading, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Yeah, something like that. So for instance, if they had, so there's three spots that are in question right now. If two of them give them the full day, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM or whatever it is, and then one of them gives them 7:00 AM to noon, I think that that would be acceptable to the businesses in the area.
But the...
And that would limit them essentially to have a big truck only during those hours, because that's the only time they have enough space.
Experts?
So the discussion, just to bring it to your attention, the discussion we have with the building owners, we tried to go over everything and come up with solutions. And we asked them, can you try for smaller trucks as opposed to tractor trailers? Can you stagger your delivery times? And what the owner of Tiger Chef is telling us is that he has, he doesn't have control over what type of truck they send and what time. He said some he can, some of the smaller ones, he could say, you have to be here at this time or that time. He said most of the tractor trailers that are, they're coming from freight line companies, he has no control over what size truck or what time they show. So I understand what you're trying to do, but, you know, I guess the question would be if the truck shows up outside of the times that you're allowing to park there now, where does he go? He's going to supply and park in the road and causing a problem there. It's going to be enforceable.
Well, you have that issue anyway, right? I mean, no matter what you do, you're going to have that issue.
Correct, yes.
I mean, maybe we can have Tiger Chef's owner come before the board and plead their case. That's what I think we should do, because right now, we're sort of working in a vacuum.
I mean, in the conversations we have with him, he seemed like he wanted to, you know, force with us and try to come up with a solution, but, you know, I don't know if he has, maybe he has other ideas than we do.
Right. Well, I mean, personally, I would love to see him come before the board and plead his case. That's my opinion. I don't know, what does the board think?
I like that idea.
So are we going to move forward with the no parking, no standing, no stopping?
Asking me?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's all contingent on what we do now.
I understand. So I, you're talking about the spot for the no parking, no standing, no stopping, that's the part closer to the Sheldon, correct?
Correct. I mean, the top end of the...
That's fine.
Loading, unloading area.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no issues there.
Well, I mean, if we're going to do the law, if, you know...
But if there's more to it, these other spots, maybe do it all at once.
I mean, that's currently how it is. I mean, if you wanted, Charles, you could put a, you know, cones out or whatever you want right now, right?
Well, we talked about what options we had, and we found, Joe and I talked about it, about length, and we feel that cones would be ineffective. We just got to run over cones.
Right.
So we have to do something a bit more, you know, balanced. Yeah, we'd have to come up with that.
Right, but isn't it the condition, well, I guess you want to wait until we know exactly what you're doing, right? Exactly what the board's doing.
Yeah, you have to pass the law before you do anything, right? So that's what we're waiting for. Waiting for the board.
I think that the safety concern should be addressed first. I mean, I know it has to go before a local law, public hearing, but the safety concern is the most significant problem that we have now.
I think we're all in agreement on the safety issue.
Right.
So you want to do that one?
Why can't we set the public hearing?
Yeah, you can do that, and then we can propose both, and then you can decide what you want to pass or not pass.
But I think we should invite the property, the guy who owns it, or woman, I don't know who owns it, to that meeting so that they can discuss their case for the parking loading zone.
So can he come prior to the public hearing or did his...
Yeah. But I, you know, now with the time, like running up against, you know, when do you do it? This, the New York, do you do it, you know, January?
I think they all should be noticed.
All the businesses.
No, 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 I mean, like a public hearing, you know, you don't want to necessarily do a public hearing like that on a workshop.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, but we can't do anything about the safety issue until January if we put it out in January?
Well, I mean, right now, nobody's supposed, he's not supposed to be parking there.
Right now, it's only no parking, which means legally...
He can stop and stand.
He can stop and stand, which is...
All right, you want to set it for November 29? We'll set it for November 29.
Can we put jersey barriers there? Cement barriers?
We'll do it in the middle of the night. I still have a couple, I have Memorial Drive we can use.
You certainly do have a lot, Joe.
All right.
Another subject.
Set the public hearing for when?
If you don't do the 29th and you don't do the 6th.
Can't be the 29th, that has to be the 6th.
Do I do the 6th? Why don't you do the 6th?
Set the public hearing for the 6th?
See what happens.
Do I have a motion to set the public hearing in regards to proposed changes to parking on Chestnut Street, loading and unloading?
Good. That's the only choice.
705.
I understand that, I would just like to...
I circulate a little before, man.
Rio's always started a half hour earlier.
Not typically.
No, but meeting, yeah, starts at 7, then the regular meeting's 7:30.
That's what it was, I'm sorry.
So then the public hearing?
You want to say 7:30?
7:35.
Or soon thereafter.
Yeah.
And are we going to invite Tiger Chef to that?
I think all the businesses should be noticed.
Should be known.
Yeah, this guy parking in my, in front of my store.
Yeah.
I agree. I think we should notice all the local providers.
Okay, all right, that's all I got.
So who's going to vote, we need to vote.
Oh.
Oh.
Motion for the public hearing.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Yeah, Albert, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trustees?
I'd just like to say that Charles Solicki and Joe, I happen to walk around a lot in my area, and I've seen all these new, I saw the new, what do you call them, drains, the sewer drains? Which your men did a beautiful job on Lancaster. This is one I watched. And then I saw the pavement, which was up all these streets, everything from the back of this church up to the top of Lancaster. And even, I think you were doing Sunderland too, right, which I walked on a lot for about three years and has been turned up.
That's where we met. That's where we met, and I would always drive around on the Sunday.
And the paving company was just perfect when they did it.
Yeah, that's a million dollars to catch it.
A million dollars.
They got their money, because everything they did was beautiful.
Yes.
Hopefully it lasts.
All right, we got it.
I was going to ask, actually, it was mentioned, the word Memorial Drive was mentioned, and that actually brings up, what is our plan? What is our status? What is the ultimate desire for Memorial Drive? Are we going to keep it sort of this way it is, one way, and, you know, whatever, or is there any plan to somehow repair it?
It's going to have to, we have to develop a plan. I know the county has programmed roughly a million dollars to aid or support us in some way, but we have to move forward with, with something more concrete. So this is a big project.
And it's done, it would be nice to see that road reopen.
Yeah.
Comprehend the plan.
Good?
I'm good.
I have the approval of the minutes of the board of trustees meeting October 4. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution approval of minutes, board of trustees, special meeting October 18. A motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Motion to, are we done? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, tonight.